Okay. All right, good. I'll wait for Mike. Hi, John. There we go. Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the St. Charles County Work Session on an informational subject, informational work session on a substance called kratom. To begin with, I think I'd like to ask the county executive to say a few words, or somebody on his behalf, how this came about.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to introduce Mark Harder, who's the councilman from St. Louis County Seventh District, I believe, which is basically West County.
West St. Louis.
West St. Louis County, and he and I have spoken on the phone, and he's interested in this subject as we are. Obviously, when I found out what we were dealing with here, I certainly thought it was important that we at least address this issue. It's going to be up to you what we do about it, if we do anything. But I certainly was very concerned when I heard some of the stories and some of the things that have been going on, and some of the additional information that's really just become available in the last year. Obviously, I, like everything in my office, Joanne finds out about it before I do, and she brought it to me. I'd like her to just give a little background of how you made contact with, was it Dr. Case or Dr. O'Reilly?
Dr. Riley. Actually, I initially found out about this because Channel 4 had covered a death from our regional medical examiner's office that our assay equipment had shown was kratom-only, and so KMOV had done a story on that. So during our regular, every-other-week meetings with the head of the medical examiner's administrative office portion, Kathleen Hargrave was in the office, and I asked her, you know, is this unusual? And she said, actually, we only bought the equipment in the last quarter, I think, of seventeen, and so up till then, we had to have reason to suspect that the testing had been very expensive before that, and so we didn't send it off very often. But that Dr. Riley, who took over the slu toxicology lab that does the work for our medical examiner's office, had required, thankfully, that that lab be updated when she took over the control of that lab, and so this new assay equipment allows for her to test for that substance regularly. And since then, we had discovered that it was a contributing factor in multiple situations. And so county executive happened to be in the office, and so we talked about that for a little while, and then she got some information from Dr. Case on those deaths for our regional medical examiner's office. In addition to that, which I'm sure the council knows, Dr. Case is also the medical examiner for St. Louis County, so she is privy to those numbers in St. Louis County. SLU also does the toxicology for St. Louis County, so they have, St. Louis County has the same access to that equipment that's necessary to get an accurate reading on when this is one of multiple substances, or if this is the only substance in somebody's system. So we've done some readings since then, and it is a rapidly expanding business, it appears, in the St. Louis area at this point in time. So kind of that was the background on how the county executive received information on this.
All right, very good. All right, moving forward then, I'd like to call on Dr. Mary Case, the St. Charles County Chief Medical Examiner.
Good evening. I actually have a PowerPoint that will kind of explain, and you have a copy in your material that I have provided. So to talk about kratom, why is the medical examiner concerned with this? You might think that I just do autopsies on people that die from car accidents or homicides, but actually, I'm a public health official, and the public service that we do is to try to prevent people from dying. Anything that is a threat to public health concerns the medical examiner. The medical examiner is the only agency that has the authority to autopsy bodies without any family permission. That is a very sacred and very heavy obligation. We don't do that easily, so our work is taken very seriously. One of our roles, besides the justice type of activity that we see when we do autopsies on homicides and things like that, another mission is to identify things like emerging infectious diseases. It was medical examiners who found the hantavirus. I happened to be in Albuquerque when all of that was going on, and two of the medical examiners in the state of New Mexico, you know, over a weekend, found that disease process. Dangerous work environments, if there's something in the workplace, it's going to be the medical examiner who is going to identify that somebody dies from that and call it to the attention of the public. Dangerous environmental conditions, adverse drug reactions, defective products. We, almost all of our deaths are reported to some agency like Consumer Protection. Right now, there is a recall going on for defective baby rocking devices. We've had thirty deaths in the country. We've had one here in St. Charles. These are preventable. There's a defective product. The medical examiners brought that to the attention of the people like yourself that could do something. Here in St. Charles, all of those beds have been banned. Medical therapy-related deaths are of interest, high-risk activities. So that's where we are, things like drug and alcohol abuse, and trends of drug abuse that affect the community. I'm not going to give you a lecture on kratom. I think you've probably had as much about kratom as you want. It is a plant substance. It's not produced, it's not any kind of a synthetic drug, and Dr. Riley, who is our toxicologist, is going to be talking about the science. But one of the things that I want to let you know is what I have seen, and this, to me, is a drug of very high concern. There's a potential for abuse and dependence. I'm going to let Dr. Riley talk about the parts of the brain that are affected. In my material that I handed out to you all, there is some scientific data that has collected information about who is dying around the country, and I'm going to be talking about that. There is a question of whether kratom produces respiratory depression in the speaker that was here last week, who I understand is a lobbyist for the American Kratom Association, so obviously has a vested interest, indicated that there is no respiratory depression, and I beg to differ that the individuals that we see, we believe are dying from respiratory depression. So let me talk a little bit about the data, and in your handout, you have the data from St. Louis County, and it shows you who is dying from kratom in association. It's the very last page in that material. Who is dying with associated drugs, and there's two cases, and they're down at the bottom, that died simply from kratom alone. So in St. Louis County, I think there were nine, eight or nine deaths from kratom, of which two were kratom alone, and in St. Charles, there were, in the St. Charles Regional Office, we had nine in which there was one death due to kratom alone, and I guess St. Louis County had eight, with two being associated only with kratom. So to me, it is a drug of concern. There is a system that is called SUDORs. That is the State Unintentional Drug Overdose Reporting System. That began in 2016, and at the time, there were ten states that the CDC was putting money out there to collect data. And when I say putting money out there, for example, Missouri was in that first cohort. There's now an additional twenty-two states, so there's thirty-two plus Washington DC that we are providing data to the CDC. And they pay us for the data, it's like thirty dollars a case. They pay for the toxicology, up to twenty-five thousand dollars per county, and they pay, they bought Dr. Riley, one of her pieces of equipment, and these pieces of equipment, she can tell you, this is, you know, these are very expensive. So the CDC has a lot of interest in knowing who is dying, and the types of drugs that they're looking at are all of the opioids, and they're looking at kratom. Kratom is not, according to some people, according to others, it is an opioid, but at least it has some opioid-like effects, but they want it in there. So when you see that SUDORs, they are collecting this data. They've had a hundred and fifty-two deaths from July of sixteen to December of seventeen, where there was kratom present, and in ninety-one of those, kratom was believed to be the cause of death, and in seven, it was the only substance. So in my three deaths that I've had, kratom was the only substance. In all of the others, it was associated with other things. This is why I gave you that list showing what the drugs were. And I will tell you this, that when you look at the other drugs that are there, it's not aspirin, it's not acetaminophen, it's illicit opioids that are being used by the same people, in many cases, that are, at least the dead ones, that are using kratom. So that says something about that.
Dr. Case?
Yes.
Just so I understand that, so those seven deaths are over those thirty-two states?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in thirty-two states.
Over that eighteen-month period?
Yes.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. Kratom is sold without regulation, unlike most substances that we put into our body and hope to have some, a good effect medically, and the DEA considers it a drug of concern. It's been found contaminated with a number of things, including salmonella, lead, tramadol. Tramadol is an analgesic material. It's been banned in Alton and Jerseyville, Illinois, the states of Alabama, Arkansas, whatever AR is, Rhode Island, Vermont, Wisconsin, and in several countries. And some of those countries that it's been banned in are the Southeast Asia countries where this comes from, so that's of interest. And they will tell you, they've been using this for hundreds of years, and that's true, but they have banned it. Yes, Mike?
AR would be Arkansas, but it's not banned in Arkansas, and I only say that because I was there this weekend, and there's CBD kratom stores all over the place in Fayetteville and Springfield, Fayetteville, Springdale.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question, doctor.
Yes.
The kratom deaths that you've found in St. Louis and St. Charles County, to your knowledge, were those pure kratom overdoses, or were that contaminated kratom that might have had lead or arsenic or another chemical?
Well, I didn't do heavy metals on them. We did all other kinds of medications, whether they had salmonella, I didn't, that's not something we can test in the toxicology laboratory. They appeared to be drug overdoses. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
To Joe's question, are the kratom that you're referring to, is there a differential between the manufactured synthetic kratom versus the true kratom, the plant kratom?
I don't know that there is a synthetic kratom. It's a plant material. They crush up leaves, and they make it into a powder. It's not being synthesized.
But is it being mixed with something else?
I don't know. What, who, I don't know. Nothing is regulating those manufacturers. They crush it up, and they put it in a bag, and they bring it in. There is no control or regulation of that material. So this is my last slide. We should learn from history. In the eighteen nineties, by that time, opioid materials were really problems. You know, you've heard of the opium wars, the opium business had been going on since the thirteen hundreds, and in the eighteen nineties, German scientists claimed that diacetyl morphine was now the cure for everything. For those people that were addicted to morphine, this material is a non-addicting substitute for morphine and codeine. Bayer Chemical Company, which is the same chemical company that we have today, that's in Germany, they manufactured diacetyl morphine, and they called it heroin, and they claimed it was the miracle drug. It was very aggressively marketed, beginning in eighteen ninety-eight. They said that it was non-addicting, and it was a cure-all for everything that, if you had some kind of a pain or discomfort, this was your answer. We know how that turned out. So, and I understand that there are many people that feel that kratom is the new miracle drug, but I would just say, we know very little about what the material is that you're taking. So I am very concerned. I am your public health official, in my role as the medical examiner, and I am telling you, there is a problem. We need to recognize it. I am not telling you what to do about it. That is your responsibility. So I thank you very much for your attention, and I would like now for Dr. Riley to come up and talk to you about some of the science. She is a PhD forensic toxicologist, yes.
A quick question, if I may. The difference, though, between heroin, if I understand, and I'm not a scientist, I think I might have been taking a nap during that part of high school, but heroin, as I understand it, is a manufactured drug, right? It's not a naturally occurring product?
It comes from the poppies.
It comes from it, but is it?
Dr. Riley will tell you the science.
Is it chemically altered, or is it a direct or?
Heroin is diacetyl morphine.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Come on up and...
When, Dr. Case, I understand you're just giving us all this information, but do we have statistics on how many people that are saved from the heroin deaths from, that take this?
I don't know how that would, how that could be calculated. That's why there are public forums where people get up and speak about that. I don't know what to say about that. I do know that I've had, in the last two weeks, I've signed out a case where a young man committed suicide because his mother was, he was addicted to kratom, and his mother was pleading with him to go into rehab, and he killed himself.
See, these kratom, and these kratom, you said it's one hundred and fifty-six, whatever, had some kratom and other substances. Was it kratom and heroin?
Okay, there is a list at the very, that packet that I gave you, there is a list of the cases from St. Louis County. The regional office, I don't have the list, I can provide it to you. My administrator was not in the office today, but if you look at that list, it'll tell you exactly what the drugs were. Many of them were fentanyl and heroin. Some of them had a lot of things, but there are two that have only kratom, and that's the list for St. Louis County. It's, it actually has the name of the individuals on it, so it's very revealing, so...
Do we know if either of those people are any of the three deaths, St. Louis County and St. Charles County? Do we know the history of those folks in terms of drug addiction or anything like that?
We do. The one in St. Louis, the one here in the regional office had no history.
No history.
She was a very normal person, by everything I could tell. One of the ones in St. Louis County is a twenty-one-year-old male, and one's a forty-six-year-old male. But I'd have to look back at the records. We usually have historical information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm Dr. Riley. I'm the forensic toxicologist in the St. Louis area, and I'm just going to give you a very quick, maybe ten-minute overview of the science behind kratom and mitriginine. And if you have any questions, you know, feel free to interrupt at any time. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint, I just kind of wanted to very casually summarize the science behind this product. So I'm the director of the St. Louis University Forensic Toxicology Lab, and our laboratory processes postmortem and DUID, so driving under the influence of drug specimens for St. Louis County, the regional medical examiner's office, St. Louis City, and then some numerous coroners' offices from around the region. So I have a little bit broader scope than Dr. Case does, as far as what is kratom being reported with, as far as other drugs. So as you all know, kratom is a natural substance. It's a tree. It's called, its Latin name is Mitragyna speciosa. It's in the caffeine family, and the leaves from this tree are, have numerous compounds in them, same as like a marijuana leaf does, but the active compound is called mitriginine. So when we talk about kratom, the, what's causing the, causing the drug effect is actually this compound called mitriginine. Mitriginine acts on the same receptor as, so at low doses, it's actually a stimulant, and some people use it for that stimulant property, and then at higher doses, it can act like an opioid. And it does that because it actually binds to the same receptor, the mu opioid receptor in the brain. This is the same receptor that heroin, morphine, fentanyl, and other opioid analgesics bind to, and, and the binding of the drug to that receptor is what gives you the physiological response, which is analgesia, and then in overdose cases, for morphine and fentanyl and heroin, you have respiratory depression and death. So the problem here is that there are very few studies, very few studies overall, and even fewer studies in humans. So most of the studies on the pharmacology of mitriginine and its metabolites are done in animals. There's very few studies in people, so we don't have a lot to go on. We do know that it, we, it does bind to those receptors, and it does cause analgesia. That's been shown numerous times. Analgesia is like, you know, the relief of pain, and it does that through the same pathways as heroin and morphine. Now, it is true that there are no studies in humans that have shown, or even mice and rats, that show that mitriginine, or one of its metabolites, induces respiratory depression. But that's, but there's no studies that show that, but there's no studies that don't show that. No one has, no one has actually studied that. And to be honest, the, no one has ever been able to, to date, no one has ever been able to delineate, so if an opioid has an analgesic property, it usually has respiratory depressive property, that, those two distinct effects of opioids have never been completely divorced. And then what we're starting to see, as the product is gaining in popularity and availability, we're starting to see signs on autopsy that are consistent with respiratory depressive deaths, and then kratom being the only drug in the, or mitriginine being the only drug in those postmortem cases that is known to have an interaction with a receptor that leads to that function. Does that make sense? So, so it is true, there are no studies, but there, no one has ever actually studied that. The other thing about mitriginine that's really important is that it has a metabolite, it's called seven-hydroxymitriginine. A metabolite is a breakdown product of a drug, so when you take a drug, your body breaks it down into something that it is easy, easy for it to excrete, get rid of. And sometimes, those breakdown products are as active or more active than their parent compound, like the compound that you actually ingested, and that's true for mitriginine. The seven-hydroxymitriginine is seventeen times more potent than heroin, actually. So depending on how frequently you take it, if your body can't clear that, so anyone who takes mitriginine, their body's going to convert some of it to seventeen-hydroxy. And depending on how frequently you take it, or what you're taking it with, your, the rate that your body can clear that seventeen-hydroxy metabolite out can change, and you might end up in a situation where you're actually overwhelmed with that very potent metabolite, and that is what's causing toxicity. These are all things that are being studied in the field of toxicology right now. And there has been studies, because it's more potent, you know, there are people out there who, who want that, they, they want that, the opioid effect, and there have been peer-reviewed published studies that there are products of kratom that have been adulterated with synthetic seventeen-hydroxymitriginine. And with that regulation on the product, there's no way to determine if you're buying a product that has added seventeen-hydroxy.
So synthetic, so you're saying that, explain that.
So, so the, the kratom's a plant, and then mitriginine is a compound in that plant that's active. So when you can, when you buy kratom powder, kratom tea, that is from the leaf. But there are chemists who can make, you know, you can make these compounds in a lab. There are chemists who are making that more potent metabolite, and then they're adding it into the natural product.
Are we seeing quite a bit of that?
And we haven't, we are just now building the assays to look for that.
Okay, so what's your, the reaction to the drug, is it no different than any other reaction if you overuse it, however it would have its good uses if it was used properly?
Right, so the reason, so it, it can alleviate withdrawal symptoms from morphine and from heroin. It's almost like, so similar, very similar to methadone, okay? So methadone and buprenorphine are opioids that are used to treat opioid withdrawal, and mitriginine works the same way, and the reason it works is because it's working on those same receptors. One of the differences in mitriginine, or kratom, and methadone and buprenorphine, is that methadone and buprenorphine are FDA-regulated, they are, you know, they're manufactured or processed in pharmaceutical laboratories under good laboratory practices, they are administered under a physician's oversight, it's not, they're, it's more regulated. But the reason that kratom does alleviate opioid withdrawal, or can, can help people, you know, wean themselves off heroin, it can do that, but it does that because it's acting on the same pathways. And then a few, few more quick points that I think are alarming. One is that a very recent study, peer-reviewed literature has come out showing that mitriginine inactivates a pump in your brain. So, so everyone has a, there's a chemical pump in your brain that pumps toxins from the, from the brain back into the blood, and this is very important for making sure that the body doesn't, isn't, die from all the toxins it's constantly being exposed to. And if that pump, which is called pea glycoprotein, if that is inhibited, then substances that wouldn't be toxic, because they go in the brain, they come right back out, they become toxic because they can't get pumped back out of the brain. And then the other thing is that it also inhibits one of the enzymes in your liver that helps break down drugs. So if you take mitriginine by itself, its potential for toxic effects might not be that great, but if you take mitriginine with other drugs that are also central nervous system depressants, and you have that, you have inhibition of the metabolism, and you have inhibition of the body being able to clear the brain, you're going to end up with synergism and toxic effects from drugs that would normally be benign. And so in my review of postmortem toxicology cases, I've seen quite a number of cases that have been positive for mitriginine, and then also benzodiazepines, ethanol, benzodiazepines are antidepressants, ethanol, not fentanyl, not morphine, not heroin, nothing illicit, all prescription drugs, and it's probably not the mitriginine by itself, not the benzodiazepines by itself, but the synergism from all of those drugs together that's causing the, the ultimately fatal toxicity. And then also, there is potential for abuse and for addiction. So I meet regularly, once a week, with medical toxicologists in the area. They are starting to have to refer patients on, who have been using kratom into their opioid withdrawal clinics, and there's, I've been notified by DRE, law enforcement, law enforcement officers, as well as the medical toxicologists, that individuals are beginning to take the powdered plant product, or even syrups, you can buy like kratom syrup online, and dissolve it into a solvent and inject it, so people are trying, starting to divert the use.
Question, ma'am? Question, ma'am?
Yes.
Dr. Case mentioned that you recently purchased a new machine-
Yes.
-that's able to detect kratom in, you know, cause of death. And this machine, when did you start using this? In other words, the statistics that we have, how, how recent are those?
Yeah. So we went live with that assay in January 2018.
Okay.
And we're seeing it, we're definitely seeing a trend. Increase, more and more cases are becoming positive with the product.
I heard you say something earlier, I wanted to expand on it a little bit. You said the majority of the cases you saw, in fact, the vast majority of the cases, I think, where the kratom was portioned, a part of the death, there was quite a few other chemical substances in their, in their focus system?
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually more than just mitriginine, yes.
Okay. Have you seen anything, I guess, have you seen anyone where that was the sole contributing factor to someone's death?
Only, I think, two or three cases that have been, that has been-
But those were never delineated whether it was the cause of the natural substance in kratom, or a chemical that maybe somebody illicitly added to it, right? Is that correct?
Adulterated.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. Just the mitriginine, not the, not the metabolite, the seven nineteen hydroxy. We haven't built that assay yet.
So, doctor, you pointed out, you went down to different effects, pros and cons, and you did mention that kratom is used in some cases where it actually gets people off opioids and heroin. So in your opinion, if it was used properly or prescribed in a fashion that was monitored by a medical professional, would that make more sense?
I think that would make more sense. In my opinion, the biggest risk we have here is that the public are just unaware of the fact that it is, it, it, it is potentially dangerous. And it shouldn't be diverted. You shouldn't be injecting it. Your body can't deal with that much at one time. You should be very careful what you're taking it with, because it has potent drug-drug And it should be, you know, the production of it should be regulated so that we don't have adulterated forms, or forms that are contaminated with salmonella or lead.
Thank you.
What would, what would your opinion be if it was regulated in a manner that anything that was sold was in a pure, organic form? Not concentrated, no additives, no syrup, no nothing? Just the pure weight comes, the ground up leaves? And it was used in a responsible manner, okay, to eliminate chronic pain? Or, for instance, a burst of energy in older people, whatever? What would your opinion of that be, in a situation like that?
So again, I think what's important is that we, we want, we need to be able to establish dosing regimen. So how, how much is it safe to take? How frequently is it safe to take it? And then, and then the, just being acutely aware of the drug, the detrimental drug-drug interactions. So I think the public needs to be aware of, of those things. So it might be safe if, you know, if everyone who's using it is aware of these things.
Okay. Thank you.
How would that come about, to study that and, and come up with those precautions?
I think that's above my pay grade.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we know what a proper dose would be? Is there any way to measure that?
So again, it's one of the things that we, we don't know-
I shouldn't say proper, a safe dose.
So again, that's one of the things that we don't know. We don't know at this point, like, what concentration is, is toxic, or, or what, you know, what dose would give rise to those, those toxic concentrations? That, there's just not enough information available in humans. Those are pharmaco, you know, pharmacologic parameters that just haven't been, haven't been well studied. And that's one reason that we wanted to start looking for it, is in our, so we can start getting a grasp on, you know, what, what concentrations are people experiencing.
My, my doctor just prescribed another medication for me, a different medication, a couple of weeks ago, and, I mean, I went online, and there are pages and pages of information about what I shouldn't take with this, and, you know, what, how much to take and so forth. I mean, is there any, if a consumer's out there and wants to take this and wants to be safe, is there any place he can go, or she can go, and, and find out?
Not right, not right now. So this, the study that showed the inhibition of the liver enzyme metabolism that would keep other drugs from being metabolized and cleared from the body, that was just published in 2017 in a scientific journal. It hasn't been digested down into something that would, that has, can be distributed to the lay population at this time.
And again, it may be above your pay grade, but, I mean, if, if we do nothing here, and we just wait for the normal procedures to take place on the federal level, I mean, what is, what is the timeframe of that, and how does that get started? Or, who is, who is, is the, is the burden of proof on the government to prove that something is unsafe? Or is the burden of proof on the manufacturer to prove that it is?
So unfortunately, like, I can run a mass spectrometer, but I don't really know that, that much about, like, federal policy. I do know that this is on the, it's a, the DEA has classified it as a drug of concern. I get calls from the DEA, they're asking me for my data. I know they're collecting data, they're collecting trends. And I think the, between the DEA and the FDA, someone puts a proposal together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, doctor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'd like to hear from Mr. David Herman. He's the chairman of the American Kratom Association. Would you please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Case and her colleague. I think they made some very, very correct points. The problem with kratom, as we see it, is adulterated kratom, not kratom. And to give you a little bit of a background, when you look at the leaf, there is a percentage of it that is alkaloids. And that percentage ranges from 0.5 to 1.5% of the leaf, in fact, are alkaloids. There are approximately 40 alkaloids within that ratio. Seven hydroxy mitriginine is not a metabolite, it's, it's an alkaloid. Mitriginine represents about 65% of the alkaloid. And remember, that's the alkaloid ratio, which is very small to the plant itself. The seven hydroxy is usually between 1.5 and 2% max. The reason I share this with you is we think that regulation should happen. We think the public should be protected. And when we see these cases, and we see them over and over, and I brought you a lot of literature today to try to answer some questions, it's the regulation of these things into proper control that is the safety valve everybody's looking for. I hear a lot of these things, DEA, drug of concern, that all comes from a very simple thing. In 2012, the FDA put forward an import ban on kratom. The import ban was based on the predicate case in Sweden of a street drug called Krypton. Krypton was a kratom powder-based product, and supposedly nine people died from that product. A scientist named Kronstrand, and this is absolutely peer-reviewed literature, shows that that powder had been contaminated, it had been adulterated, with something called Odesmethyltramadol. Odesmethyltramadol can be a metabolite of tramadol, but in these cases, when you see it as a metabolite, you find residual effect from the original tramadol in the product. There's none there. This was an intentional product created to get people high, and in fact, nine people died. That was really a big case for them to move forward. The problem is that in 2011, this was disproved, but in 2012, FDA put forward an import ban. As part of that import ban, that raised the specter of a drug and chemical of concern. Different agencies use different words, but that's the wording that's used at DEA. My colleague previously gave you some of the history, and I'm not going to go back through all of that. But when you look at the, the situation as to what is banned, what is here, how do we do it? DEA, historically, when they've been asked to ban a product, does so within 90 days. An outlier is 120 days. We're now over a year and a half later, where they have refused to step forward and ask for Schedule I ban under the Controlled Substances Act. There's a reason for that. They're not happy with the science. In the folders in front of you, what we tried to assemble for today was based on your previous hearing, and to answer some of the questions. And one of them, I got a kick out of, and that was from you, Councilman Klingheimer, hypothesis, theory, whatever, on why are they doing this? So if you'll look in your folder, you'll see that the first page shows that when FDA has an application fee for clinical data required, it's a down payment of $2.5 million. Now, if you go to the next page, we've highlighted for you that user fees provided 65% of the Human Drugs Program funding for fiscal year 2016. This is a cash cow for FDA. In 1994, they tried this before. They tried to control the supplement market and throw it into the new drug application process. Congress revolted and said, "No, you're not doing that." And the result was the DSH Act, the Dietary Health and, Dietary Health and Science Education Act. And what that did was create a supplement category that FDA could not throw into the new drug, product. Councilman Cronin, you asked a question about NIDA, National Institute on Drug Abuse versus FDA. When this originally came to be, there was a limited amount of science available. And NIDA, in fact, sided with FDA in their request for the original ban in 2016. Since that time, NIDA has taken a completely different view, mainly because the science has been coming, hard and fast. So I've given you a, a printout on the left-hand side of your thing, on the University of Florida, just having received two grants totaling almost $7 million to study kratom. Not to ban it, not to get rid of it, to study it, because they think there's medicinal capability here. As we look through this, and by the way, when we talk about FDA-approved products, I heard methadone mentioned, according to CDC, there are 5,700 methadone overdose deaths annually. I'm glad they approved it. If you look at the third page here, you'll see that we've compiled for you. This comes from the FERS database, which is the FDA adverse event reporting system. The total cases, serious cases and deaths by product. Mitriginine during this period from 2008 to 2017, 44. Ibuprofen, 4,068. I mean, as we go down this list, there is no public outcry here, there's no agenda here. This is not dangerous. What's dangerous is contamination and adulteration. So as we follow further with that, the next article for you has to do with 15 deaths in Colorado. This is a commentary that we got from the New England Journal of Medicine recently. Of the 15 deaths, it was purported that four of the deaths were kratom-only. On further review, and you can see the credentials of the people who made this analysis, they found blood samples still available for three of the four kratom-associated deaths. All three of them, and the results are in this packet, show you they were poly-drug use. One of the problems that we have, and I don't think you have that problem here, but I can tell you, traveling around the country, I see it pretty often, is that medical examiners are overwhelmed. Very few have the competency and capability that Dr. Case has. That's a rarity. Forensic pathologists make up less than 47% of the medical examiners in this country. So we get a lot of stuff that's kind of suspect. But when you look at the Colorado deaths, it will explain it for you. As far as the CDC report with 152 deaths slash 91 deaths slash 43,000 deaths, whatever the number, if you read the report, not the headline, the report is CDC is saying we need to do a better job of being able to analyze what's happening with these things. That's, that's the import, and we've given you five scientists who've reviewed the CDC report and given you their conclusions. So we're looking at these things, and one of the things that came up just now was that the MU receptor in the brain is hit by kratom. Yep, sure is. Heroin, fentanyl, these are full agonists, that's the term for them. Kratom is a partial agonist. And what that really means is kratom will bind to that receptor and then release. We can show you studies, multiple studies, that show there is zero, I mean, zero respiratory suppression coming from kratom. If it's there, it came from an adulterated product. The University of Malaysia has studied this for 200 years and doesn't have a single case. There is a world of information that we can share on this subject. Finally, I have a, an explanation that I found kind of compelling. This is as to the alkaloids in kratom and what they do. These alkaloids bind to the opioid receptors of the brain, however, they do not carry the same lethal consequences. This is because kratom is an atypical opioid. Before I further delve into the details, a crucial aspect of terminology. An opiate is a substance that's derived from Papaver somniferum, also known as the opium plant. An opioid is any substance that binds to the opioid receptors of one's brain in a substantial way. Furthermore, just because a substance binds to one's opioid receptors does not mean that substance is dangerous. For example, dark chocolate contains a compound known as epaquetin, I can't pronounce it, epaquetin, which binds to the delta opioid receptors, and various dairy products contain beta chasomorphins, which are groups of peptides with opioid properties. However, these opioid properties are found to be non-addictive. If we go back to the history of what we looked at in your previous hearing, the FDA tried to get DEA on an emergency basis to ban kratom. In an emergency ban, rather than the normal eight-factor analysis, which is a statutory report required for proof, they can go to a three-factor analysis. And the three factors are abuse potential, addiction potential, and harm to the public good. All three were found to be low. Everything has a harm potential. Everything has an addictive potential. You can get addicted to water. But the abuse potential and addiction potential, according to the three-factor analysis, are low. Jack Henningfield, who worked for NIDA for 20 years, is an adjunct professor at Johns Hopkins University, and one of the addiction specialists in this country, clearly states over and over again that there is a very low potential for abuse or addiction in kratom. He also says the high is worthless. Why in the world anyone would bother with it, he cannot comprehend at all. When we talk about overdoses, there's a term called LD-50. LD stands for lethal dose, or lethal death. And in LD-50, you're trying to determine how much of a product will kill someone, which means 50% of, of these patients, rats, whatever you're using, will die. They have not found a dose high enough to create the LD-50 effect in kratom. It is self-controlling and self-regulating, in that when you take too much, you throw up. Now, we come back to the issue. We absolutely think this should be regulated. There's no reason not to regulate it. We don't think it should be sold to anyone under the age of 18. We don't think pregnant women should take it, because there's no studies done to make sure that it's safe. We think the label should show the contents clearly on what's in the package. A consumer has the right to know that he's taking real kratom unadulterated. And now we come back to the ratios of the alkaloids. If we see things that mirror the natural plant, we have a 200-year history saying this is safe. If you change it, and that is what we just heard, there are people who can concentrate it, there are people who can enhance it, well, we're against that. The psychotropic effect that you can get from seven hydroxy mitriginine is virtually de minimis because of the content percentage ratio it has in the plant. It's tiny. If it is 1.5% of something that is only 1% of the plant, that's pretty small. We don't want anybody to enhance it. So what we push for, and travel for, and want for, is to regulate the product. Let's do this. Let's protect the consumer. So I, I think the points made by, by Dr. Case and her colleague are spot on. We need to regulate this thing. And that's where we are. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman? How did your association come about, and when did it come about?
Me?
The Association of Kratom Association?
Oh, kratom, the AKAs started in 2014. It was some well-meaning kratom lovers who wanted to protect the plant. It's evolved since then. In 2016, when the government tried to ban it, and they did that on August 31st, 2016, a hue and cry went out in the land. And we had 140,000 people that replied. We had 51 members of the House of Representatives, and we had 13 members of the US Senate that said, "No, don't ban this." During that time, our mission became, "Let's keep kratom legal." As that involvement continued, we've brought together leading scientists, we've done a tremendous amount of research on this thing, and it's all growing exponentially. And we want to see a product, I personally take it, I took it an hour ago. If I'm high, let me know, would you? It helps a lot of people. One of the real sidebar things here, and I'm not going to make any medical claims for opioid withdrawal, but I can tell you from the people that do use it for that purpose, you're going to find both things in their system, you're going to- You're going to find the heroin, say, and the kratom. Because rats, there's a study called the Hughes Study that was paid for by NIDA. In the Hughes Study, rats went right by the kratom to morphine. They didn't even see it. It didn't exist in their world. There was no addiction potential. So what we're finding is that if kratom hits the mu receptors in the brain, which it does, and you're scaling it up, as you're scaling an opiate down, you can relieve the symptoms. If somebody falls off the wagon, and sadly, that happens, you're going to find both in their system. It didn't mean kratom. Killed them, it meant kratom was trying to save them. Yes, sir.
We're running short on time, so I'd like to give the other councilmen a chance to ask you a question.
Absolutely.
Mr. Herman, is there any statistical data on how many lives that are actually saved by the use of this product, or any kind of estimates of any kind?
It's anecdotal. I can tell you that our latest number on actual users of kratom nationally is 16 million. And based on what you're hearing and what you're seeing around you, we ought to have the streets full of dead people if this is really harmful.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
With the tremendous increase in the number of people that are selling this product, and your stated belief that it should be regulated, does this scare you?
What, that more people are selling it?
Well, that, yeah, that it's unregulated, and all of a sudden, there are a huge number of people that are now selling it.
In November of last year, our group came up with standards. The standards require a willing cooperation, third-party independent inspection of facilities, making sure they're clean, and adherence to what we're talking about here, which is proper labeling and all that. We think that is part and parcel of the Kratom Consumer Protection Act. We now have four states that have passed this law. Utah, Georgia, and Arizona passed it, and the governors have signed it. In Nevada, we now have it passed, waiting for the governor's signature. And in the General Laws Committee here in Missouri, it passed by a tentative vote. We believe in regulation. We believe in controlling it. Let's do that.
Sir, did you have an opportunity to look at the alternate bill that the council produced?
Yes, sir.
And?
I think it's wonderful. You know, in Georgia, and I'm from Georgia, so I'm a little bit prejudiced, but when we went through this in Georgia, one of the leaders in the Senate looked at me and he said, "You know, we believe in moderation. You know, one extreme to another extreme never really works out that well. So what we're going to do is regulate this thing, and then a year or two from now, we're going to look at it again." And he said, "That's a moderate approach," and we think that was a pretty wise way to look at it.
Who in Missouri are you working with to have it regulated?
Well, the bill that was, the Kratom Consumer Protection Act was sponsored by Representative Phil Christophanelli.
Okay. Very good.
Can I ask the doctor one question?
Yes.
Ma'am, I forgot your name. Matthew Dr. Case, the other one? Dr. Riley. Yeah. Was there anything, I got to ask this question, you were, I was watching your facial expressions.
Could you come up to the podium, please?
Yes. All right, I'm not good at answering.
No, I just want to just get your opinion. We don't have to go back and forth with you two, but I was noticing what your face. Was he making any accurate statements medically or about the product or about the addictions?
So
In your opinion?
Just a few things. So when he said that seven-hydroxymitrogynine is not a metabolite, that's not true. It is a metabolite. So it is present in the plant itself at very low concentrations, as he stated, but it is also a metabolite. So there's a potential, if you don't take it on a good dosing schedule, that you can accumulate that in your body. As far as being studied for 200 years in Malaysia, that's not true. Malaysia hasn't had the capacity to study this drug for 200 years. Honestly, the reason it's been banned in those southeastern Asian countries is not so much from having overwhelming number of deaths, but because of the social impact that it has, people becoming essentially like kratom heads, they just want to sit at home and drink kratom tea and not engage in society. So, I mean, it is true that people aren't dying like, you know, flies in these countries where it's a natural, or it's a native plant, but it is having an impact on society such that they have decided to ban the product. And then as far as an LD-50, an LD-50 in mice and rats has been published, and that was in the Journal of, oh, I just pulled it up and I can't remember, but there has been an LD-50 determined in mice, and I think that was it. I think that was some of the things I heard that were just incorrect.
So you're saying that makes people lethargic, and is it similar to what marijuana does to the brain?
There is no high associated with kratom. No one injects it. It's a plant material, it'll tear you up.
I was asking her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't tell where you were looking.
So I meet regularly with medical toxicologists in the area. These are people who are actually seeing patients, as well as with law enforcement. And professionals in both of these different arenas have stated that they have encountered individuals either on the streets or coming to their clinics for treatment, which they're coming for drug addiction reasons, who have been diverting the product and injecting it. And these are, these are professionals.
But if I may, injecting is not the proper use, is it?
Correct. Right. So it's evidence of the abuse of the misuse of the product, right? And you wouldn't do that if you weren't trying to get high.
All right. By the way, one other thought, sir. Thailand banned kratom. They did it after World War II. The primary reason, and you can Google this and you'll get the same answer, is because they had a tax on opium, and kratom was cutting into their opium tax. On December 26th of this year passed, Thailand legalized kratom for medical use, so it's no longer banned fully, it's partially. Indonesia has not banned it, and the primary producer of kratom in the world is in fact Indonesia.
Sir, you know, you spoke of the benefits of kratom. Give me a percentage of people that would go to a doctor's office and the doctor would say, "Listen, there's a lot of benefits to this, and I think that this would be something that would be good for you." Is that a common practice at this point?
No.
And how come?
Well, I think part of it is it has an awfully dirty name when you start saying things like drugs and chemicals of concern. You've got a reputational risk from credit card companies that refuse to let people sell it properly. If you'd like to see a store that presents itself well, one of your constituents has the CBD kratom store in the Galleria. Go take a look. Go talk to those people. See what they think. You know, we believe strongly that in this country, you have the right to take something if you want to, if it doesn't harm you. And where we fall apart is the harm that we see as adulterated product.
Mr. Razzle?
Mr. Cronin? That same story you're talking about in Galleria has one Lake St. Louis. So I did my research on this stuff, and I found out the dosage, found out that you're supporting to get a store that sells a pure, unadulterated form that's certified by an outside laboratory. Additionally, I have a sister who's 70 years old, who is a healthcare professional, her entire life, right, and a life insurance, who swears by CDB oil. Okay, just swears by it, does testimonials. She looks like she's 50 and she's in her 70s. So I have chronic shoulder pain, very, really bad, and like any 64-year-old guy that's worked with his body his whole life, I feel a little sluggish in the morning. So I bought some kratom, and I bought it at that store in Lake St. Louis because I was, everything that you could see about that store was, it's a pure product. I took, I went online, found out that the recommended dose was two grams, okay? On a day that I had nothing to do, I had nowhere to go, I was just going to do work around the home, I took two grams of this stuff. Two grams of stuff, it's like opening up a green tea bag. I'm a tea guy, I drink a lot of tea in the morning, like Lipton's tea, and trying to swallow it. It's like two tablespoons. It's a pain in the ass to get down. Another way of saying it, okay? But I had a whole day off, okay, and I had a lot of chores around my house. I thought, well, I'm going to give it a try before I ban any of this, you know, think about banning this stuff. Took it, and immediately I noticed I have a fully separated shoulder, I've never had surgically repaired, it's really bothers me in the mornings. Boy, it's starting to feel pretty good. And I'm starting to feel, I don't drink caffeine, I drink decaf coffee, but every once in a while, my kids will slip me in some, a Starbucks or something caffeine. It felt like I took a double espresso, I had a lot more energy. My pain go away like I had taken three ibuprofens. And that day, I did 300 retaining wall blocks and backfilled them with a shovel and felt like I was 25, 30-year-old guy again, okay? Now, since then, since then, I thought, I'll try this one time and see. I'm thinking, my wife's going, "This stuff's good. Look at all the work you've got done today." But I tell you, for instance, I went to the Irish Festival down at Newtown, okay? And they had a CDB stand at the Irish Festival in St. Charles County. And I look at the patrons that are going there, and they all got the color hair of me. They're all old people that swear by CDB and kratom to help them chronic pain. After the last meeting, I went down to that cava bar where those folks were here and talked to the folks down there. It wasn't like a bar. There was nobody talking loudly, falling off the stools, being abusive in any manner. It looked like a coffee shop. So there are people that get benefits of this. I may never, ever take it again, but I sure as hell wanted to see what it did for me, and I don't take any type of other drugs. But beyond that, Thursday of last week, I had a full medical workup, once a year annual, and they did all kinds of blood work at BJC Hospital. I got a call, and I haven't, this was 13 days ago I took this stuff. I had, so they did liver enzymes, all the, some of the tests the doctor talked about, did a full workup on me. I got a call from BJC today from the clinical staff, "Everything's normal." And I told them, I said, "64 normals, good." So it had no adverse reaction to me. I did check my O2 levels, I have one of those little things that goes on my fingers, I have pneumonia about. It didn't change my respiratory rate. I did check my blood pressure a couple times during the day with it, and I have high blood pressure, hereditary, and it had, it did lower my blood pressure a little bit, it seemed like. So, I mean, I understand people abuse it, and I understand when you concentrate anything, including alcohol, it can be bad. That's why, you know, people, you know, don't drink Ebe Clear. They drink Budweiser, or they drink a glass of red wine, because if you drink pure ethyl alcohol, you're going to get drunker in hell, you're going to get sick. But I mean, in the proper, in the proper presence, this stuff works for a lot of people. I heard, we've got tons of emails from people about this. I took, went right down three blocks away from here, went to that cava bar, and saw a lot of older people who were really feeling, told me this stuff is a lifeline, they couldn't get out of bed without it, okay? They had chronic pains so bad. So I think right on spot, I think regulation is important, and I like Representative Christophanelli's bill, and I'm hoping that maybe we can regulate and not ban.
Thank you.
All right. We ran the clock down, unfortunately. I'm sure there's other people who'd like to add to this.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Herman, let's assume we all agree, you know, this is really a consumer protection issue, not a medical issue. What's the standard? What is, how do you determine what the proper dose is? We asked our Director of Health to go ahead and purchase some product, and of course, this one has, neither one of them have a dosage on it. Neither one of them have a name or information. You know, you mentioned people getting addicted to water. I happened to look at my water bottle this afternoon, I was drinking it. I mean, it tells me where it was bottled, gives me an address, there's a company. If anything's wrong with it, I know who to contact.
How about your tap?
There's nothing, yeah.
How about your tap?
City of St. Charles.
We have some problems occasionally.
City of St. Charles.
I think that's what the folks in Flint, Michigan said.
But this one, this other one here, it says, "Manufacture of the product not responsible for misuse of the product," but it doesn't say who the manufacturer of the product is. Would that be one of the first things you'd want to regulate?
I think the first thing we want to
Put a name on it, so you know who's holding responsible?
The first thing we want to do is label it, so that everything in there is properly identified. The second thing we want to do is have restrictions on it. And generally, what we're recommending is the supplement regulations that are put forward by FDA on these things, because this is a supplement.
But would there be, would there be a name of somebody to hold responsible if?
Oh, yeah. The company has to, yes. Yes, sir. Yeah, we want full disclosure.
Can the industry do that voluntarily? Does government have to tell them?
Well, we have asked FDA to do this. And because of the need, we think, for a low-hanging fruit in the opioid world, we, look, what we just beat, and because of the money situation that I just shared with you, we haven't had that cooperation. So we, as a group, stepped forward and we started this. Well, we've got it passed in four states, we've got it active in 12 more states. This is a movement that's coming forward, and it's not coming forward because of me. It's coming forward because of the wisdom of crowds and people that say, "Wait a minute, this can help me." It will evolve. It will get different.
We're arguing about things we agree on now.
Yeah. I find most of this in agreement, to tell you the truth.
All right. We really ran the clock out now, so I'm going to have to ask for the work session to be concluded, and we're going to have to take a short recess and get prepared for our regular meeting. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for what you contributed to this meeting, and
The bills are going to be discussed.
And the bills will be discussed during our regular meeting.